We're gonna get started right here in a bit. I know today's a very, it's a special day for, for a lot of you, but we will go ahead and get started. This is a city council special meeting. Today is Monday, May 12, 2025. It is 5:35 PM and we are here at council chambers at the City Hall Building, 100 South Monroe Street, Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Texas. We will begin with the establishment of quorum. We do have a quorum today with Councilman Garcia, Councilman Diaz, Councilwoman Cruz, myself, Mayor Salinas. Mayor Pro Tem Davis couldn't make it, so we will count him as absent. Moving on to a moment of reverence. As many of y'all know, the, the community was faced with a very tragic loss of a young man that lost his life a couple of days ago. Young man by the name of Augusto Gutierrez, who had a tragic accident. Augusto was, was beloved by many of his friends, his family. He had a big following. It is evident that a lot of people loved him. A lot of people cared about him. So here on, on city council, we wanna honor him and have a moment or a couple moments of silence out of respect for Mr. Augusto Gutierrez. Thank you very much and may he rest in peace. Citizens Communications and Recognitions. We do have a citizen communication by Ms. America Garcia-Grewa. Yes. Good afternoon, Ms. As always, you know, you know the rules.
Yes, three minutes. So, and thank you for the opportunity to address here regarding HB 74, the Puerto Verde Port Authority District. This bill has passed the House and is going into the Senate for a vote. While we at the Fundetta Federation and residents of Eagle Pass, including residents of Maverick County, recognize the potential economic benefits like job creation and infrastructure development, we have a number of critical concerns that must be addressed. And I'm here to ask you as our city council to go to the Texas Senate and ask that this bill not be passed. The environmental risks cannot be overstated. The district's proximity to the Rio Grande and to our single source of water for all of Eagle Pass and the surrounding areas raises, we have great concerns about water quality as well as habitat disruption and increased pollution from industrial activity. We do not believe that there is the appropriate oversight to protect our natural resources and comply with federal and state environmental laws. In addition to the environmental strain, there'll be significant impact on our local, local infrastructure without commensurate benefit to the city of Eagle Pass and our local government. We are not receiving anything here in Eagle Pass and if anything, we will see a decrease in tax revenue. I know that you're unpaid, but the rest of the employees of the city of Eagle Pass will see an impact in this way. The district will be able to impose taxes, issue bonds and levy assessments, which may burden local taxpayers. Again, this is the people of Eagle Pass, which is why I'm here asking you as a city council to go to the Texas Senate and vote no, urge them to vote no on our behalf of the city of Eagle Pass. We need guarantees that the city of Eagle Pass residents, including all of Maverick County, will not shoulder disproportionate costs or debt. My other concern is governance and transparency. The board's structure lacks direct local representation and the power of eminent domain could displace landowners. We demand safeguards to ensure transparency, community input and fair compensation. In summary, we here in Eagle Pass support economic growth, but we insist that the bills that are put forward in our name, Maverick County and the city of Eagle Pass, have, um, address the issues we brought up that mitigate environmental harm, limit financial risks and address governance gaps. Let's ensure this project benefits Eagle Pass and all of Maverick County, not just private interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grewa. Just a, a little comment regarding this issue. I do agree with you on this one 100%. So with that said, we will move to the canvassing of the election. Item one, canvassing of general election held on Saturday, May 3, 2025. At this time, I will read the, the voting counts. For Mayor Monica J. Cruz, early voting, 1,322. Election day, 440. Total votes received, 1,762 votes. Mayor election, Jesús Casas. Early voting, 614 votes. Election day, 278 votes. Total votes received, 892. Mayor election, Aaron Valdez. Early voting, 1,325. Election day, 532. Total votes received, 1,857. For council member place two, Elias Diaz. Early voting, 1,691. Election day, 678. Total votes received, 2,369. For council member place two, Jorge Sierra. Early voting, 1,497. Election day, 546. Total votes received, 2,043. For council member place four, Jessica Ray Ramon. Early voting, 1,589. Election day, 619. Total votes received, 2,207. Council member place four, Hanson Uy Tessie. Early voting, 409. Election day, 173. Total votes received, 582. Council member place four, Alberto Rodriguez. Early voting, 1,183. Election day, 437. Total votes received, 1,620. The total votes cast on early voting were 3,284. On election day, it was 1,258. And the total votes in this election were 4,542. Those are the official vote counts. Wanted to read them into the record. And at this time, we'll go ahead and move to item number two. Consideration and possible approval of an, of a order, of a, sorry, consideration and possible approval of a resolution accepting the canvas of the above stated election. I have read the, the numbers on the record and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve these voting numbers. Do we have a motion? To approve the, the numbers so stated?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Garcia. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Discussion. All in favor? Four in favor, unanimous.
There's no conflict, right? Probably we're all looking at each other.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's just reading the, the numbers onto the record. So at this time, we will go ahead and move to the oath of office to the elected officers. Ms. Erica Rodriguez is gonna take the lead on this. I believe we're gonna start with place two. If we can please have Councilman Diaz.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Elias Diaz.
I, Elias Diaz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I would faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of council member place two.
Of the office of council member place two.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, and will to the best.
And will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The constitutions and laws.
The constitutions and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So we've come such a long way from my first election about five years ago. I wanna thank every single person that has believed in me, that has invested into this campaign and has thought about what they can do to help Eagle Pass move forward. When I was first running, my, my campaign slogan was, "When I win, we all win." And while I did not want to recycle last year's fashion, right? I did not wanna recycle that for this event. I definitely stay true to those words. Because this win is not necessarily for me. It's for the people of Eagle Pass. It's for infrastructure and development. It's for social services. It's for public health, mental health. It's against domestic violence. All of the things that everybody in this room that knows that I stand for, I will continue to stand by those things and I will continue to fight for those things as long as I'm on council. And so for all of those that have helped me get here, whether it's my family with their constant prayers, their support, my dad putting up signs, my partner Eli being my campaign manager, every single one of my friends that is, is, is actually like family to me. Everybody that has helped me get this far, I wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve, to continue to advocate and to continue for a better Eagle Pass, not just for me, not just for a select few, but for all of us. Thank you.
At this. At this time, we'd like to invite Ms. Jessica Ray Ramon. Up to the dais, please.
You're good?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Jessica Ray Ramon.
I, Jessica Ray Ramon.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I would faithfully execute the duties.
That I would faithfully e- faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of council member place four.
Of the office of council member place four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, but, I'm sorry, protect and defend.
The constitutions and laws.
The constitutions and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
First and foremost, thank you so much for being here. And I just wanna thank everybody, everyone who supported me, everyone who is believing in me. I promise to not disappoint. I will represent our city to the best of my ability. And as my slogan says, I will be putting our community first, always. I'm here to be your voice. I'm here to advocate for the betterment of our community. I'm all for growing, thriving and most importantly, preserving our roots here in Eagle Pass. And I promise not to disappoint. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for everyone again that believed in me, from my campaign manager Alicia, from morning to the evening, planning, walking, knocking. My mom for just being my voice and, you know, lending me her shoulder when, you know, it gets tough. It does get tough. My dad, I couldn't have done it without him. From every single sign that you put, to every single phone call that you accepted. And my friends and my supporters and most importantly, my children, you are my drive. And just when I thought I couldn't keep going, I kept going for you guys. And I will continue to go for, um, go forward and I have big plans to hopefully make you guys proud. Thank you, Eagle Pass.
I would like to congratulate reelection Mr. Diaz and congratulations, Councilwoman Ramon. Welcome to city council. We know that you're gonna be a great part of the team. Looking forward to the next four years. And before we move on to, to voting, which is gonna be the, the first item that you get to vote on is item four, I would like to invite Councilwoman Cruz to the podium. I know that she has some words.
The first thing that I told her before congratulating her is just to bring, make sure that she brings a swag. Tonight marks a meaningful milestone. At our last meeting, I shared what I believe will be my final words as a council member. I spoke from the heart about how much these past four years have meant to me, how this chamber has felt like home and how deeply honored I've been to serve this community. I don't know exactly what the future holds next month as I continue on this new journey running for mayor. But no matter where the path leads, the time I spend here has been among the most rewarding experiences of my life. That passion, that sense of purpose and that gratitude remain just as strong tonight. Now, as the canvassing takes place, I officially pass this seat on to the next person who will carry the responsibility of this role. I want to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Ramon, who will be stepping into this position. Although we've only had a few opportunities to speak, Ms. Ramon, and meet, and met recently, I already know in my heart that she will represent this community with strength, grace and integrity. Mrs. Ramon, tonight, you are not just accepting a title. You are committing your life to public service. There will be hard days and moments that test your resolve. But it is in those times that the promise you make today, the commitment to do what is right for the people will carry you through. Stay grounded always because once we lose that, we lose the very purpose of why we serve. Let that promise and that grounding be your compass. It will never fail you. Serving this city has been one of the greatest honors of my life. As I hand over this seat, I do so with confidence, pride and a heart full of hope for the future. Thank you.
Now we have to get to business, right? Item number four, election of Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, I'll open up this item for a motion on anyone who wants to make a, a motion to appoint a mayor pro tem.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Councilman Billy Davis.
We, we have a, a motion to reappoint Mayor Pro Tem Davis by Councilman Diaz, a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Number five, consideration and possible approval of a resolution calling for a city officer's runoff election to be held Saturday, June 7, 2025, establishing procedures and authorizing, approving and constituting the order of said election.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is gonna be the resolution for the runoff election for the mayor position. A couple of changes that noted to the resolution in front of you all. Early voting would be May the 27th to June the 3rd from 8 to 5, but we did include two days, which is May the 28th and June the 2nd to be 9 to 6. And then a special date of voting, which is Saturday, May the 31st from 9 to 1.
Can you repeat the, the 9 to 6, when is the?
Yes, the, uh, the dates for the 9 to 6 would be May the 28th and June the 2nd. And then Saturday, May the 31st would be from, which is a Saturday voting, which is considered as a special day of voting, would be 9 to 1.
9 to 1.
Yes.
Okay.
And it will be at the same location, the Antonio Cruz Munoz Gymnasium located at 2086 Roosevelt Street.
Okay, do, do we have a motion to approve the resolution approving these dates?
Are we able to amend the times?
I'm sorry?
Can we amend the times?
Yes, we can.
We can, it's, it's open.
Yeah.
For discussion.
So I, I think one of the things that we saw during the last election was that it was really difficult for people to get out to vote and, and I think that we felt it in some of those voter turnout numbers. So I would like to see more of a continuous late date, kind of like the 9 to 6, but maybe expand it to more days.
Do you wanna do every day like 9 to 6 instead of 8 to 5? So you wanna amend, uh, May 27?
Or 10 to 7?
10 to 7.
Or 10 to 7?
Yeah, whatever.
So it has to be eight hours, but you can choose.
Nine hours.
I mean, nine hours.
By law, we're required to be open nine hours.
So nine, nine hours is the legal minimum?
Correct.
Or the legal maximum?
Maximum, the legal maximum, sorry.
Legal maximum, okay.
Cool, we can have 9 to 6 every day instead of having the 8 to 5s, correct?
We can do that.
I hear your 10 to 7. The only thing that I think about is the people that actually work until 7 and the, the judges. That might be a little rough, but.
We can do a 9 to 6 instead of an 8 to 5 every day.
9 to 6, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve 9 to 6.
9 to 6, what, every day?
Every day.
Plus the Saturday?
Plus the Saturday, 9 to 1.
Okay.
Okay. You wanna repeat that, just so it could be on the record?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve extended, or to, to approve voting hours 9 to 6 with 9 to 1 on Saturday.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Diaz. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Garcia, discussion.
Just to clarify, this is only for early voting?
Yes, only for early voting.
Only for early voting.
You are required to be open on election day 7 to 7.
Okay, there is a motion, there's a second. Any further discussion? We'll take a vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Also for the record, I wanted to let the public know that of course we, uh, this is a runoff election. It's just for the mayor's seat. Additionally, there will be a recount. Uh, there has been a recount requested by Mr. Casas. As the officer, I have to accept that, his application and it has been accepted. So there will be a recount granted to, to Mr. Casas, just so the public can know about that. Okay, with that said, we'll go ahead and move to item number six. Did I miss anything?
No.
Thank you. Item six, third and final reading of an ordinance of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, amending chapter 23 by adding Article 2, Section 23 dash 25 of the Code of Ordinances by updating the procedure for approving preliminary plats, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing a severability clause, providing for publication and declaring an effective date. Mr. Madera?
So this is a third and final reading, Mayor, Council. There's no further details to add here. Uh, there's any question, we're available. But we recommend approval of the third reading.
Okay. All right, do we have a, unless somebody has questions, do we have a, a motion? Well, do you wanna run through what this is about? Just so Councilwoman Ramon can, can know what she's voting on?
Sure. So our previous procedure in following Texas Local Government Code was for plating when you take larger tracts of land and breaking them up into smaller lots, like usually what developers do to make residential lots for sale. Uh, we would do a review through staff, then take it to a planning and zoning commission meeting and then the city council. Texas legislative, legislative changes allowed for cities like us to do what they call administrative approval. So instead of doing the staff review and then bringing them to those two meetings, PNZ and council, we could do it on a staff level to make things a little more efficient, make it faster for development and try to save them, save them time and money, which hopefully gets passed down to our, our citizens who buy homes, buy lots, to be able to get. to be able to get that at a lower price. So that's pretty much a rundown of it.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
With that said, do we have a motion to approve the third and final reading of this ordinance? Do you want to make the motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Ramon. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? This is the easiest one.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Ramon. A second by Councilman Garcia. All in favor, unanimous. Meeting is adjourned at 6:06 PM. Mr. Valderra says a couple words.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, obviously, we have some drinks and refreshments, snacks outside. You guys, please stick around and enjoy those. We got them for those here celebrating today's event.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around. That's it. Thank you. Thank you all very much.